Calling the City of Monterey Planning Commission into order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Chair Dawson.
Here.
Vice Chair Bluth.
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Present.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa. I'll go ahead and mark him absent. And Commissioner Silva.
Here.
Great. And then I can go ahead and announce the staff members present.
Would you please?
Sure. We have Community Development Director Kim Cole, our Planning Manager Levi Hill, and myself Recording Secretary Erica Barrera.
Well, I hear the plan is for us to stall our, our leading items here until this evening so that we can have a presentation from y'all. So is, is there someone?
So, so first we'll go ahead and do just public comment for items not on the agenda.
Okay, that's true.
Before we jump in. And Erica, if you can remind how to participate in the meeting.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who has a comment that is for, for, for an item that is not on our agenda tonight? Is there anyone on the internet that has a comment?
I currently see no attendees, but I'll remind the public how to join. Information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at iSearchMonterey.org. Remote commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak, and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you are connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we recommend keeping phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. Thank you for participating in your city government. Back to you.
Thank you. Yes, so we're fortunate enough to have a student group tonight to give some presentations. We've had the privilege of working with multiple student groups from the Cal Poly San Luis Obispo Landscape Architecture Class. And they've been spinning over the last several months, getting to learn a lot about our community and working on some design concepts for various study areas throughout the downtown. And I think some of you had the privilege of seeing some of the presentation boards before the meeting got started. But they're going to be giving us a few presentations to dive into the details of their, their designs as well. And like I said, this is for various improvement areas throughout the downtown. So we've also been able to have the privilege to work with their instructor, Miren Day, and some local design professionals as well, including Wallace Gordon. And with that, I'll hand it over to our first student group.
Okay, before we begin, I just want to speak on behalf of our class, LA404, and express how thankful we are for you guys to host us. We've been working on these projects for a long time, and it has been an honor to work with the City of Monterey. We want to give special thanks to Levi Hill, Kim Cole, and Wallace Gordon just for helping us along the way. We really appreciate it. And once again, we thank you all. And without further ado, I'm Kieran Hopper. This is Keomi Saylor, and we are the Musical Corridor at Downtown Monterey.
All right. Sorry for the technical difficulties. So, okay. So to kick off our project, our class took a field trip to downtown Monterey. And on this field trip, we were incredibly inspired by the history of Abalonee in Monterey, as well as the representation of music in downtown with the beautiful Golden State Theater and the brass accordion sculpture on Del Monte Avenue. On our site visit, we also noticed that the downtown area and the waterfront area had very successful, almost flawless circulation. There are pedestrian and bike-friendly ways to get to the waterfront. We saw an opportunity to enhance wayfinding and connectivity from Alvarado to the ocean. On our field trip, we had firsthand experience of the beautiful and entertaining genus loci of Mont- of downtown Monterey and the waterfront. However, as we analyze these areas, we noticed that there is a disconnect between downtown and the waterfront. There was almost no wayfinding that notated that the ocean was in close vicinity to the downtown.
So returning back from our field trip, we wanted to learn a little bit more about the musical history and significance of Abalonee in Monterey. And we learned that 1967, there was the Monterey International Pop Festival, which was one of, if not the largest event for the history of rock and roll. And there are festivals such as the Jazz Festival that are still going on annually, and the California Roots Festival, which shows that there are new demographics being brought to Monterey, which, in our opinion, highlights that music is a universal language that people can enjoy regardless of personal experience or age. We also noticed that in our research, Monterey, I mean, Abalonee has consistently come up as an important species for different cultures across different time periods. And we saw a major opportunity here to implement Monterey in our designs due to its decorative nature. So to sum it up, our project goal is to enhance the connectivity between Alvarado Street and the waterfront using a theme of music with reoccurring, with a reoccurring motif of Abalonee. And we plan on connecting all of our sites through multiple ways, one of them being this outdoor Abalonee epoxy idea. And our idea is to blend outdoor epoxy with UV-resistant paint to mimic the form and color of Abalonee. And then to implement this paver throughout Alvarado Street and all of our sites. And we also intend for there to be a small gap under that epoxy blend to allow for lighting. So if the city wants, they can flip the lights on, and they have thematic lighting from Alvarado all the way to the water. Another idea that we were using to frame all of our ideas together is this idea of stages, not statues. So we wanted to provide opportunity for musical performance rather than commemorating past figures because we felt that would be more fitting for the history, the musical history of Monterey. And we did a little research, and this woman, Christine Rowe, a writer for the American Planning Association, outlined how cities can engage music within their economy. And a big, a big idea that we use going forward is that we wanted our designs to provide an opportunity for musical performance through the city rather than sporadic performance. An example of that would be downtown Santa Cruz. We wanted downtown Monterey to maintain its Monterey feel. So we wanted all of our event spaces to be through scheduled and programmed events rather than random events.
So based on our research and analysis, we designed four underutilized sites within downtown and the waterfront, the first being Bonifacio Plaza, then Oseo Plaza, then Portola Alley or Portola Mall, and finally Marina Park. Our main goals for our site design are to direct pedestrian traffic towards Alvarado Street and from there north towards the waterfront. We aim to direct pedestrians north on Alvarado Street through the use of wayfinding lights, Karen, and how Karen mentioned, the Abalonee pavers, as well as a cohesive planting palette. In order to incorporate the musical theme into our design, we are using the characteristics of a musical crescendo to frame the programming of our sites. For those who don't know, crescendo is a musical symbol, symbol shown on sheet music that tells the musician to gradually get louder during a certain phrase of music in order to create a musical focal point. We are applying this to our design by programming our sites to gradually get louder or more extravagant as we, as pedestrians travel north on Alvarado Street, towards the waterfront. Our first stop on the Musical Corridor is Bonifacio Plaza. Bonifacio Plaza is a courtyard space for an accounting firm, bank, jewelry, jewelry shop, and tattoo parlor. Rosine's Restaurant uses Bonifacio Plaza for back-of-house operations. And on top of these surrounding uses, the plaza also acts as a pedestrian circulation route between Caie Principale and Alvarado Street. Bonifacio Plaza's programming is framed around the dynamic piano to mezzo piano, which means soft. Bonifacio Plaza needed to have a design that would accommodate all of the businesses that use the space. This design is a soft, subtle, quiet design that consists of a flexible use area, a planted seating area, and an updated back-of-house structure for Rosine's Restaurant. The second stop on our Musical Corridor is Oseo Plaza. Something that we loved about this plaza is the architecture of the surrounding buildings, the theater itself, and the balcony. Additionally, the permanently closed Oseo Theater is now an affordable housing, sorry, is now affordable housing. Similarly, similarly to Bonifacio Plaza, the Oseo Plaza acts as a pedestrian circulation route between Caie Principale and Alvarado Street. Oseo Theater's programming is framed around the dynamic mezzo piano to mezzo forte or moderately loud and, or slightly loud to moderately soft. Oseo Plaza's design accommodates moving pedestrian traffic with the main walkway. The design also provides outdoor entertainment and social gathering space for the residents of Oseo Theater. Oseo Plaza has a small stage for performances and provides space for stagnant pedestrian traffic as well as performance audi- as well as performance audience space on the planted balcony seating area. The third stop on our Musical Corridor is the Portola Mall or Portola Arcade. The Portola Alley acts as a major transition point between downtown and the waterfront. And its existing conditions are very pleasant. Portola Arcade's programming is framed around the dynamic forte or loud. Our design turns Portola Alley into the Portola Arcade by adding a magnetic, grand, attractive roofed structure over the alley that is inspired by the architecture of the Monterey Bay Aquarium and Italian arcade malls. Considering that this site is a major transition point, the design aims to create an attractive structure that guides pedestrians towards the arcade. And once they're within the arcade, they have the choice to either go downtown or to the waterfront.
So when pedestrians walk through the new Portola Alley, they will be, they will go on to Custom House Plaza, which we are proposing to include our Abalonee paver within Custom House Plaza to bring people from that Portola Alley entrance slash exit to Marina Park. And Marina Park is our new idea, which is currently an open space between Custom House Plaza and the waterfront, which we noticed vendors and pedestrians using very frequently. So we had full intention to keep this open space as it is. However, most of Marina Park takes place in the parking lot for the marina. And we are proposing to remove parking in parking lot A. And then should there be a need for those missing parking spots, we are proposing to add a second level to a parking structure in parking lot B. So Marina Park is split into four main areas, the Entry Experience, Harmony Park, the Rhythmic Gardens, and then the Shell. The Entry Experience is intended to have a very clear threshold between Marina Park and the existing area through the use of the, an arch, which is intended to mimic the Portola Alley arcade design. However, it'll be much smaller scale. We wanted to just give the area a cohesive feel to it. The Entry Experience is also going to feature a small elevated stage meant to juxtapose the large event space that I will get into in a little bit. Harmony Park is the next stop, and it is, it's intended to function more like a traditional park with programming such as picnic tables, play structure, barbecues, shade, seating, and a bathroom. And it is intended to provide amenities to locals and also people traveling through the area. The Rhythmic Gardens are the next stop, and the Rhythmic Gardens were heavily inspired by this visual and experiential crescendo that we are trying to create along Alvarado Street and the waterfront, just in a much smaller scale. We have a little visual graphic up there to show how the Rhythmic Gardens were inspired. And it's intended to have interactable musical elements towards the more bigger, more extravagant ends of the crescendo, and then get more intimate, smaller, and quieter as it goes closer to the right. And then the big iconic moment is the Shell. So what we are proposing is to implement a pretty large 30 to 40-foot stage that mimics the form of Abalonee. And we wanted this stage to be meant for large events and, large events and large gatherings. And in the off days, we wanted pedestrians and the public to be able to experience the stage up close. So we have full intention of leaving it open to the public and allowing people to, you know, take their pictures, see what the stage looks like from inside and such. So before we end, we wanted to leave a quote that we have been going back to throughout our whole process. If art is how we decorate space, music is how we decorate time. Thank you.
Great. So I think we're going to move through all the group presentations, and we'll come back through for questions that worked for the commission.
All right. So before we begin our presentation, we just want to say thank you again for having us. It's a pleasure. So we are Monterey's Cultural Canvas Group. My name is Avery Libbus, and my teammates are Piper O'Neil and Thomas Fernet. So today, we are excited to share our design proposal with you all. First, we will introduce our process, followed by our vision, challenges, goals, and objectives. We'll also explore the historical and community connections, and then go more in depth into our details. So prior our visit to Monterey, we conducted research on the cultural history of the area, which included the different cultural eras and people that inhabited the space. And then we also explored the aspects that made Monterey so unique, which was primarily the Custom House and Fisherman's Wharf. Whoops. So it was crucial that we had all this context information because when we did visit back in October, all of our research was reflected and was ubiquitous in Monterey's landscape through the historical landmarks, through the architecture, through the materials and plants, and ultimately the people. Some of the notable locations that we visited were the Cooper Malera Adobes, which have been transformed into a very attractive place. We also visited Semino Plaza, made our way up Alvarado Street to Bonifacio Plaza, Portola Plaza, and then ultimately to Fisherman's Wharf. And through visiting these locations, it was evident that there's so much character in this place and so many places to explore. So our question was, how do we pay homage to the cultures of Monterey while also attracting people to these amazing spaces? To answer this question, we developed a vision statement. So we are connecting people to the cultural stories of downtown Monterey through art and gardens. And from our vision statement and through research, we found three challenges that we wanted to address. A, the historical landmarks in Monterey deserve more recognition. B, certain locations in Monterey have potential for further use. And C, there is no proper entrance into downtown Monterey. We also developed goals and objectives to solve the challenges. So first, we will use gardens and artwork to showcase these landmarks and their heritage. We will also implement wayfinding to bring attention to these historically significant areas. We will also create spaces that represent the diverse cultures of Monterey that have inhabited the area in the past. We also garner foot traffic through downtown to guide people to these plazas and ultimately to Fisherman's Wharf. We will utilize artistic features such as mosaics, statues, and murals. And we will reflect the cultural style in Monterey through modern iterations.
After acknowledging these goals and objectives, the first thing we did is conduct more research into Monterey. We did this by looking into the historical connections in downtown. We noted down all the locations of existing historical buildings and realized that there were clusters where they were more prominent, including towards City Hall, where we are now, down Alvarado Street, and towards the waterfront. And although historical cultures are important, so is modern-day culture. So we also looked into community centers in downtown, including the Conference Center, Sports Center, Jack's Park, and the Monterey Museum of Modern Art. Using this information, we created our master plan with our designs centering towards the waterfront, Custom House, down Alvarado Street, at Bonifacio Plaza and Semino Plaza. And to acknowledge our goals and objectives, we moved to the Custom House Plaza, created cultural gardens towards the waterfront, created new entry experiences into downtown, and connected Semino Plaza and Bonifacio Plaza more to the path of history. For circulation, we realized that there were a lot of one-way streets in downtown Monterey, and we wanted to create main pathways. So we turned Alvarado, Del Monte Avenue, and Polk Street into two-way streets. We also created, increased bike paths and pedestrian walkways for alternate modes of transportation, and made Pearl Street bus-only. Our first stop is the Bonifacio Rose Garden, which is a pedestrian corridor beginning at the bus stop in Cal Principale, which we expanded for people to sit, going towards Jack's Park. In the center is the Bonifacio Rose Garden. There is a story and a history with this location about Senorita Bonifacio and William T. Sherman, where he returns from war, takes a rose off his jacket, and plants it in her garden as a symbol of their love. And her house used to be here, the Casa Bonifacio. And although the, her home is no longer here, the story remains. So to honor this, we created a Spanish-style rose garden to call back on this history. Next, moving towards Jack's Park, we have this pedestrian corridor where people can walk through, but also take a moment to take in artistic murals representing different historically prominent figures in downtown Monterey to bring attention to their stories. Next, we have Semino Plaza, which we realized this street from Semino Plaza towards Alvarado was really long passing through. So to close this, along with making this intersection a bit simpler, we made this street bus-only. And we also wanted to strengthen the path of history coming through this area towards the Stevenson House. And since Jules Semino's restaurant used to be here, and he had a close connection with Robert Louis Stevenson, we wanted to make the path of history more than just a parking lot. And we added some plaques, speaking of their history, and some trees of vegetation for people to pass through. At the beginning, entering Semino Plaza, we added an entry landmark to give people a kind of like, wow, I'm here. I'm in downtown Monterey. So they can just see where they are and note that down. And the last feature is terraces coming down in Semino Plaza, which are 3D topographical maps of downtown Monterey at different time periods. We thought that since it's a transit center, why not call back to people in transit through people who have immigrated to Monterey and left their mark on this city? through people who have immigrated to Monterey and left their mark on this city?
The final parts of our design were mainly focused around the harbor near the wharf and Custom House. For, for the Custom House Plaza, we noticed how that it was one of the underutilized spaces we were seeking. And so one of the first things we did was we moved Custom House Plaza to be more centered around Custom House and more near the wharf. And this would allow it to be more directly connected to Custom House as well as be, as well as continue to be a solid space for event, events and other things. And, um, the place where Custom House is now, we moved and uh, we changed to be more of its own green space with artistic elements and lighting elements to, um, kind of guide people more towards this area of, of historical import. Yeah. And another main thing we did was create cultural gardens to represent many of the different cultures that are, that all gathered here on the wharf, both the wharf and the Custom House. And one of the main, and one of the fir- ones we made was a Japanese-style garden, which used elements of Japanese garden design philosophy to, um, create, to represent the Japanese people who really, um, helped build up the wharf and were integral to a lot of, um, the history of fishing in Monterey. And so it, um, it uses, um, miniaturized elements of, such as mounds and rocks to represent the geography of Monterey and the shape of the garden as a whole is meant to mimic the Monterey Peninsula and call back to like how, to call back to Monterey and make a unique Japanese garden for it. The next, um, uni- cultural garden we made was the Italian Sicilian Gardens. Um, these are meant more to be a much more, um, social space for people utilizing the new Custom House Plaza as it's much more closely connected now. And so it's much more open and it has unique features such as a topiary garden and, um, plantings that mimic the Italian Sicilian style, as well as a redone bocce ball court that makes it more enjoyable for visitors and, um, allows for more seating and, uh, observation of people who might want to play the sport. Then around the Pacific House at Monterey State Historic Park, we were very entranced by the beauty of the current Spanish-style garden there and felt that the area surrounding it could benefit from connecting more tour, connecting more and creating a sort of, um, unique style. And so we utilized, um, elements from, like, in the Spanish, um, gardens such as Adobe-style planners and, uh, as, and a, uh, plaza that utilizes mosaics and artistic elements to kind of bring more attention to this area and, um, inspire more people to check out the Pacific House. And the final part of design we did around the harbor was create a better entry experience. And so while the Japanese garden acts as an entry to the wharf from the parking lot, we also, like, created more pathways that connect to the bi- current bike coastal path. And, um, can, and we also placed some ob- observation decks, um, along the coast that are more isolated to give people a unique view of the harbor from, um, the coast. And we converted Spanish Plaza from a generally underutilized space to a green space that helps emphasize the entrance to, um, downtown along with implementing a statue element that gives signage and, um, along with connecting bike lanes more towards the rest of the downtown circulation we're redoing. Um, this all allows, um, Spanish Plaza to create an entry experience, not just to downtown, but to the harbor as a whole. Along with that, we're restructuring parking to be a bit reduced from the coast and using a parking garage to make up for lost space. All these elements that we're using throughout downtown are, um, are telling the stories that, um, we were able to see through just our visit to Monterey and emphasizing them in a, in a new way. And all these, um, stories just come together in their own cultural canvas that will help allow both visitors and residents to enjoy the history of Monterey in a new way.
Hello, um, I'm Noemi Ho and this is David Hornung. Our third team member unfortunately couldn't be here today. Emma Daniel, and we are the Flow of History. So today we'll be going over our opportunities and constraints, then our goals and objectives into our vision statement, and then we will start to describe our design. Beginning with the opportunities and constraints, we were fortunate to be accompanied by a couple of local experts on Monterey and downtown design as we have visited in October. And from that, our team decided to tackle a couple of tasks with the first being improving the connection and flow through downtown, highlighting historic buildings, structures and features, and enhancing adjacent businesses and land use. From that, we got our goals and objectives with the first being preserving and celebrating Monterey's cultural and natural heritage. And one of the ways that we're gonna do that is by using water as a unifying cultural element. So that would look like the ocean and the Hartnell Gulch, which will be resurfacing. We'll also have native planting throughout our site. And then also establishing interactive entry experiences to downtown Monterey. As you might have heard from previous groups, the entry experience is a little bit, um, it can be improved and we identified that on two of our sites. The last is to connect history with user circulation. So we'll be enhancing connectivity and we'll have a recurring cultural mosaic to guide people through. As you can see over here, um, our vision statement is to enhance user experience by revealing layers of history through connections to water. And the cultural mosaic that you can see on the right side of the screen is actually tiled. It's a tiled mosaic from, um, the tiles are currently displayed in Custom House Plaza and we're inspired by that. Moving into site analysis, um, this image, um, shows two of our primary downtown entry points with the top being Custom House and the south being, or the bottom being Adobe slash Semino Plaza. These two images show historic eighteen hundreds pictures overlapped on top of the current site usage with the, um, the current historic, or the historic waterfront and the historic gulch path shown in bright blue. So one of the questions that came up for our team was how can these historic elements be reframed to attract visitors? How did water, um, bring people to Monterey in the first place? And how can it continue to attract visitors to Monterey? And then a little fun fact that we uncovered in our research, the street layout in this area was actually determined because, um, because of the gulch that was there and now it's in a pipe. So bringing it back will help people understand that connection. Moving into waterway analysis, um, the surface water conditions are shown here. Um, historic waterways are shown in blue. And as you can see, the Pacific Ocean used to be, um, a little bit higher up the land. Um, and the Hartnell Gulch, which is the above ground, you can only see in that black line, um, just below our site. I could use this over there. And it used to extend all the way up to Jack's Park. So our vision is to eventually see it resurfaced all the way. But currently, we are proposing just to surface it around the Adobes. Um, the FEMA flood zone is shown in brown and it is below grade of the gulch and the lake. So which means, um, surfacing the gulch will help to mitigate flood and also slow down water that might hit downtown.
And then as a group, we also were, uh, tasked with like, understanding the circulation of downtown. And we found that like there are a lot of one-way streets and it was kind of confusing to navigate downtown. So we were, uh, trying to determine like what would be the best solution to, uh, fixing that and creating more circulation for, or improve circulation for, uh, pedestrians and bikes along with vehicles. Um, so thinking about making those one ways into two ways, um, and then understanding that if we, uh, close down Alvarado Street, which was an idea, or, um, take away some of that parking on Alvarado Street, that there are mo- uh, multiple, uh, parking structures, uh, that are surrounded in downtown Monterey that are very underutilized in peak tourist months. And then along with, uh, street access and street parking that are surrounding Alvarado as well. And then we were playing with the idea of, um, taking away, like I said, taking away the parking and/or, uh, shutting down Alvarado Street. And during one of our, uh, meetings, uh, a question came up asking like where would these businesses, uh, have access to get the resources they need? And there are, uh, many parking spaces or parking lots along with through buildings that connect to Calprince Pal and Alvarado Street, along with Tyler Street and Alvarado Street, that allow for multi-access to these businesses, um, to get the resources they need to stay in business. And then to tie in the cultural aspect to this, uh, we highlighted all the main cultural sites. That's, that are, that will be significant for visitors and locals to experience through the Hartnell Gulch down Alvarado and then eventually into Custom House Plaza. So this is the master plan. As you can see, it's starting at the south. Is Hartnell Gulch and revitalizing that will go into Alvarado Street, which we have currently a one-way, one lane with no parking in it. And then, um, going up towards Custom House Plaza to reconnect everything back towards the water. So, uh, we'll start at the gulch and this has three primary goals. Uh, we want to daylight and restore part of the Hartnell Gulch in a way that it is beneficial to local ecological and supports local businesses. Um, this will be done by a strategic location adjacent to the historic Cooper Malera Adobe, um, with tiered decks to extend the cafes and restaurants and then, um, plant native plantings throughout the entirety of the site. Um, we also want to activate the Semino Transit Plaza. And this will be done by strengthening axial relationship with the Adobes by relocating the historic Red House to be the Plaza's focal point. And then a one-way bus lane that closes at night for enhanced pedestrian experience. And then third, we will like to improve bike, pedestrian and public transportation circulation. And this will be done by extending and expanding the gulch side path for increased accessibility to the transit center and Alvarado Street. Um, from this, we'll come to Alvarado Street. Um, and this will, this has no water feature like the, uh, Custom House does with the ocean, nor does it with the, uh, gulch. But we wanted to incorporate this wavy flow pattern that, uh, ties in that historic water feature. And then, um, close it down from its two-lane, one-way and the two lanes of parking to just a one-way, uh, with no parking. We want to, uh, enhance the circulation and, uh, the, uh, pedestrian and bike experience along this path because there's so many different, um, businesses and restaurants that a lot of people would like to experience. And this could also allow for more outdoor seating for these businesses and, uh, restaurants as well. And then we go to the Custom House Plaza. So there's two main goals of the Custom House Plaza. One is that we want to bring people from the highly-traffic coastal bike and walking path to the downtown, uh, area and vice versa. To do this, we moved the main path to the other side of Custom House. I can point it out right there. Um, and then we also wanted to open up the view, uh, from Alvarado Street because, um, the Custom House was kind of blocking the view to the ocean. We wanted to create a more, uh, cohesive, uh, circulation path that people can see from Alvarado Street to the ocean. And, um, so, oh, almost done. And then the other design also has terracing that also creates, uh, many vantage points for people to actually enjoy the ocean as well as, uh, the Fisherman's Wharf and creating the overall experience for everyone, not only locals, but visitors to enjoy.
That is it? Thank you. Well, uh, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Anthony and I'm joined here by my, uh, Cal Poly colleagues here, Sandra Maldonado and Healy Castillo. And together we are Team Triple Entente. And we are delighted to stand before you to unveil our, uh, project, uh, aiming at enhancing the charm and functionality of downtown Monterey. So throughout the course of our project, we, I outlined a set of goals and objectives, each aimed at addressing the issues that we observed during our last visit to Monterey. And at the core of our project philosophy, uh, is our thematic motto, Movement Moment Memory. So for movement, we envision seamless circulation, uh, user circulation that contributes to, uh, a high-functioning, uh, urban landscape where users can ultimately navigate throughout the space. So essentially closing down Alvarado Street and making that into, in, making its entirety into a full pedestrian hub. And for a moment, we envision, uh, to invoke cultural resonance in a space where users can ultimately engage with and admire. And as far as memory goes, uh, we envision forging this everlasting memory and personal connection that ultimately engages, uh, the user senses through planting design or, uh, monuments, landmark monuments. Uh, as far as our site inventory and in la- and analysis goes, uh, we tried to stay true to our theme Movement Moment Memory. And as far as movement goes, we identified amplified traffic in the current vehicular circulation. And if you'll see to the right, uh, our, in our proposed vehicular circulation, uh, we are ultimately closing down Alvarado Street to make that into a full pedestrian, uh, use. As far as moment goes, uh, again, uh, we identified amplified moments in the current user experience to the left. And to the right in our proposed user experience, you'll see that in Alvarado, there are many moments that lead up to the ocean. And likewise for memory, highlighting current memories, current user remembrance versus, uh, proposed.
So this is our master plan. And as you can see, it starts from the Semino Plaza and goes all the way up to Custom House Plaza. The orientation, we changed it here for the demonstration to be ninety degrees clockwise just so you can get the idea of that connectivity between Alvarado Street and Custom House Plaza. So this is a closer view of the, um, list of plan for Custom House Plaza. So going back to that Movement Moment Memory, um, we decided to create moments in the entrance when you enter to go to when you enter to go to the wharf and also in the custom house plaza. Um, we decided to create a water sculpture in the middle of Custom House Plaza. Because um, we identified the ocean to be a similarity between all the cultures that have existed in downtown Monterey. Um, and then we used abalone because it was also used um, in all the different cultures. So this is a section perspective of what um, a point of view to the ocean would be. And we decided to use movement and a moment. Um, so it shows how a person could sit down, for example, on a swing and view the ocean and have that moment. And then this is a um, section perspective of the park that exists behind um, Custom House. And so we wanted to bring that open space and have the opportunity for people who come to visit um, to have a moment where they could be with family and have like a picnic. And then this is a perspective of what memory was to our group. So we thought memory was taking a picture going back in time um, from the past, present and future. Um, and we decided to create a frame to showcase um, the idea.
Okay, so now I'm going to be getting into um, what we're calling our street character in sections. Um, here you can see four different iterations of um, what we think Alvarado Street could be and the potential it has to be a fully pedestrian access. Um, so here in these different iterations, we, each of them all have their own um, rain garden and way for uh, water can to be catched onsite um, and filtered through the site. Each of them allow for um, frontage on each of the buildings to allow for businesses to extend beyond the actual building itself. Um, and attract people to walk through the space, um, be able to interact with the windows where they have their products um, and sit down in those restaurants. Um, but yeah, these are just different ideas that we have that could work to allow for seamless circulations of pedestrians as well as emergency or um, different vehicles that need to pass through. Um, so this is our master plan that just has Seminole Plaza, um, Alvarado Street and what we are calling our connection parks. So this is the first um, connection park that we're calling the community corridor. Um, this is at the most south end of Alvarado Street and currently in this alleyway. Um, it is surrounded by buildings that we kind of thought brought in the youth of Monterey. So there's a pizza place, um, a yogurt shop. All of these places that we thought would gear in the youth of Monterey. So here we wanted to bring in a lot more color to allow for people to acknowledge that this is a connection from Tyler Street to Alvarado Street. Um, through these playful ways of plantings, um, people are are allowed to come here and boulder if they would like or sit in these um, fun grassland plantings. And then the street that connects through Tyler Street and Alvarado Street and um, the parking lots there um, almost act as like a canvas for local youth to come um, and be commissioned to paint. Here we have um, what we're calling Lady Bonifacio's Plaza. Um, so here, like Piper mentioned before, the story of the Sherman Rose Adobe and um, that rose, we kind of wanted to gear it more towards Lady Bonifacio rather than Lieutenant Sherman because it was her home that was here. Um, and she was a very prevalent figure in the community. So this is a space that we're really invoking that feminine aspect of that, um, creating a place where people can um, commune together, um, which has like touches of her Italian heritage. Um, and allowing for people to collect. And then there's this extension on Bonifacio Plaza Street. Um, to allow for people like seating and allowing for frontages in for those buildings there. And here we have uh, Oseo Plaza where we were trying to figure out um, how we could connect the theater and the cultures. And um, we thought by doing so storytelling is very prevalent in all cultures and is what um, really makes a culture what it is. And so here, um, we have this scenic walk where people can come through. And there are plaques of different stories that were significant to each of the cultures that made Monterey what it is today. Um, to really allow for those um, stories to thrive and um, continue on. And that concludes our project. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And if we want to open it up for questions from the commission and then also we'll open it up for a public comment at some time as well.
Okay, um, can we have, we have questions of staff as well?
Sure.
Okay, anyone?
I have one question. Um, in the far corner, I think this was the presentation on history. There is this lush picture of uh, Custom House terracing downward toward an idyllic plain overlooking the ocean. Is that a computer-generated art piece of art or did somebody draw that?
That picture was computer-generated. Well, not AI, we uh, developed it in Photoshop.
Very well done.
Thank you.
Levi, is this, is our participation limited just for questions or can we actually make comments?
Yeah, can make comments as well. Um, yeah, questions.
At this time or after the public?
Uh, we'll do it after the public comment, just to follow our typical procedures.
Mike, Bob? I guess we don't have any questions.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and open it up for a public comment and see if we have any members of the public online or in the chambers that want to speak on it. And then we can move on to commissioner comments.
Do we have anybody online who would like to speak?
There are currently no attendees online, but once again, information on how to participate remotely by Zoom or telephone is at isearchmonterey.org.
No hands up?
No hands up.
Okay, so uh, commissioner comments. Peter?
Congratulations all the team members who participated. And it's, it's, it's a bit overwhelming uh, as fellow commissioners and myself to look at this and just be kind of uh, bombarded with a lot of great ideas. Um, some of them that come to mind are the, the abalone shell bandstand. I think that's just fabulous. I would love to see something like that. You just did a great, now you're, is this a landscape architect? But this is really urban design. It's more than just landscape architecture. And so kudos to branching out into more significant aspects of this. Um, there's no saying if uh, if you build it, they will come. And I don't think that statement is at all true when it comes to decommissioning streets into public uh, uh, pedestrian corridors. Um, there's been a lot of examples of this over the years. Um, the trend of actually converting streets to corridors for pedestrians started back in the late sixties, early seventies, way before your time. And in many of these cases, um, the transformation killed the downtown. Because believe it or not, cars activate downtown and there's a, an urban designer named Robert Gibbs, who I would encourage everyone to get familiar with, who writes about this. And he talks about how to revitalize retail areas in downtown core districts. And one of the most important parts that a lot of urban designers tend to miss is um, it while it may be nice and ideal to have a pedestrian corridor, um, you have to get the people down in the first place. And people are lazy. They don't want to have to park and, and walk three blocks. Um, so having an active uh, corridor with traffic actually is one of the things that Robert Gibbs talks about to activate downtowns. Um, there's examples, for instance, K Street Mall in Sacramento back in the early nineteen seventies. Uh, uh, it was a two-way street. Um, and Sacramento decided to turn it into a pedestrian mall. And uh, it was a disaster and it still is a pedestrian mall to this day. And most of the businesses along K Street uh, are not doing very well. Pacific Garden Mall in Santa Cruz attempted something similar um, back in the nineteen seventies and that um, didn't go well over time. Um, so anyway, just um, not, not to nitpick, but um, I think um, the idea of doing pedestrian corridors sounds nice, but in the end, they may not actually achieve what businesses want. So, that's it.
There you go. Mike?
When I saw the first presentation from Cal Poly, it started my mind cranking of what happens to these kind of projects? With government, we look at things, write up a plan, talk about it, it goes into a file cabinet and when a new regime comes in it, that's thrown away. So I started thinking, how can we take the concepts that this group has presented to the Monterey and enliven them into our plan? So, in my mind, it came out basically that we come up with a concept plan. We have a, a pro, a funding program in the city of Monterey. It's called NCIP, Neighborhood Community Improvement Program. And I've been a lot of experience with them. And typically when an idea comes in for a project, they assign it to an engineer to come up with a plan to spend the money. But frequently, we don't have a city concept plan that they can go to to try to dovetail that plan into some community concept. So in my mind, what we need to do is to make a recommendation through our planning representatives to the city council that we should put into an ordinance or something that has more foundation than a file cabinet. That the engineers of the city of Monterey study that concept plan and try to incorporate those parts that the city likes or recommends and put it into place over a long period of time, not just today. Because we all know what happens with today's projects. Something else more higher priority comes into place and it gets bumped. So, as we come up with ideas for projects within the city, I would like to have a sounding board in place that we could bounce any new projects to a central concept plan. City, a city would pay a lot of money for these kind of plans and so I really do appreciate what you've done. But bottom line is, uh, we need to think about how we're going to put concept into practice. And so I, when it comes time, I will make a motion, but I've let my colleagues speak. Thank you.
Bob?
I really agree with what Mike was saying and um, I was thinking about it in a little bit of a historic perspective. A hundred years ago, the oceanfront was totally different. Um, what you see now is a, no reflection on what was there before. And that's because the city had a plan to build View on the Bay Park, Lake Elstero Park. And they kept to it. It was a hundred years of work. And um, when we had maybe ten years ago, the um, car dealership pulled out, we finally came to a stage where we really had accomplished something with the city's goal of over a hundred years being met. And taking some of the ideas that you've got and starting to add to that process where we can build up a bunch of um, concepts that can then be implemented that help with the city in its tourism and its business activities would be, I think, um, a great way of um, using the type of ideas that you've generously come up with to, to share with us. So, I agree with uh, um, the previous um, council or um, committee members that, that abalone idea is fantastic. I mean, it's really novel. And um, I think the ideas of having to look at um, how to redirect traffic and pedestrian activities is worth really looking at. I mean, I agree with what um, you were saying, Peter, about um, um, closing down streets, but I have a hard enough time parking on Alvarado no matter what I do. And so um, you know, maybe just giving it up completely and um, making better use of the city garages might make sense too. But you know, having these opportunities to get your ideas, then go back and forth would be a real um, valuable way of running these um, issues through. And maybe it's done just with staff too, working with them um, to keep the ideas going. So.
Thank you. Dan, yes, no?
Yeah, yeah, actually, first of all, beautiful job. I just really appreciate the uh, creativity which you approached us and that's what I want to make a few comments on. Um, as you will soon learn in a few years or few, before you get out into public practice after you've finished your education, there's going to be plenty of things coming at you that will kind of like quash these really good ideas. And I just want to say, stay as fresh and creative as possible for as long as you can. Because it's with that freshness and the, the ideas that you come up with that is where we get our great living areas. And that's really important. On one of the presentations back there, I know I was listening to what was going on and I saw the Stanton Building and that was building built largely it as a result of Virginia Stanton donating money on her late husband's behalf and he was an architect. And I worked with her as an emerging architect with AIA a long time ago, long, long time ago. And she used to refer to us as her starry-eyed architects and I never really thought, what did she mean by that? But when I was looking at your presentation and hearing what you all were saying about that, I was doing like, here's our starry-eyed landscape architects. So, there'll be plenty of time for the seriousness of how a concept is implemented to come. And I just want to thank you for your creativity. It was just really inspiring to see that. And I'm glad you all went to Cal Poly because I did too. So.
That's great. My comments are that we had four separate presentations, each one emphasizing a different point. Music, culture, history, and then the three Ms. And yet all of them pointed, I think universally, to the need to create more attractive access from the Hartnell Gulch or Seminole Plaza, either one, down to the actual wharf front. And I think that that reflects what we have talked about um, here on the Planning Commission as well. And in those presentations, bringing a solid north-south axis and making it a more attractive passageway. Some of the highlights I thought were one, from the music group, the arcade glass roof. The one that was going to go over Portola Mall. And that also could apply to Bonifacio Plaza as well. People see the arcade glass roof, whether it's peaked or curved or whatever. They think there's sure to be something really good underneath there, like you know, that they want to see. Um, another element I thought was just charming is all get out was the axis of lights from the end of the Portola Mall to this soon-to-be statue uh, near the custom plaza, the custom house, where the lights were maybe four feet high instead of eight or six feet high and just leading you along the path. Uh, that was really, really inspired. But uh, anyway, everyone was so good. And I want to compliment the professionalism of the speakers, really so smooth and really well done.
Mike, if I may, I did add two points. One of the things the Planning Commission does is we, we hear complaints and we, we see issues that manifest themselves as projects come through. And you guys hit on one of them, the streets. Can't find your way around Monterey. So many people complain about that, not just tourists, but the ones that live here. So I really appreciate the thought that went into it. And that's going to be one of the, the points that I, I think we need to push really hard. The second one is when the first presentation was given, I, one of the things that sat in the back of my mind, and as questions come up, because we do projects on historic sites. So one of the things I asked Mr. Hill to do was, how are we coming on making a route that you can walk and see some of these, these structures that are, are historic? And he recently told us that they're moving really quick on that one. So I want to thank you for keeping that consciousness in our minds as we move forward on regular projects. So thank you.
Thank you. I was, I was very impressed with, with the groups. It turns out that, that a lot of your good ideas had been visited by us at one point or another. And, and yeah, I think that's, that's, that's good for both of us. Because we, we forget, we forget the great ideas because we're, we're, we're doing the daily, the daily stuff. But you come in with a, with a big surprise and a good surprise. And thanks for that. Thanks for that. And thanks for your creativity because we're limited here. Creativity. We just have to get it done. Thank you very much.
I have a question of Kim. Kim, where's the city at on future planning? As it pertains to this kind of a project?
Well, so right now we're working on our general plan, right? Which is the, the most significant plan for the future of our city and where and how we're going to grow in the, particularly in the next eight years. I think what, what I, what resonates with me from this conversation is we have specific plans for all three of our development, primary development areas where we anticipate in fill. Some of these ideas are sort of fresh perspectives on some of the streetscape improvements that could be considered. And more closely, we have a new engineering team predominantly. And maybe there's some opportunities to really integrate some of those concepts. We've already achieved a lot. I don't know if you remember, but we started out with a very, and maybe we can report back. Prior to the downtown specific plan being written, we were at a point of high vacancy rates on Alvarado Street. The conference center hadn't been built yet. The Al, the Cooper Malera Adobe had not been re-envisioned. And the primary streetscape vision of the downtown specific plan was to anchor the two ends of the street. And we did that through a very creative financing partnership with the hotel industry to construct a new conference center. We have a new plaza out in front and seating. If you remember, not too long ago, the Cooper Malera Adobe, about fifty to sixty percent of it was shuttered because it was the, the financial system in place to support that building wasn't raising enough money to rehabilitate the barns. The Chella Restaurant was a storage building. It was closed most of the time. So we're now reaching about a hundred percent occupancy on Alvarado Street. Our two main ends have been constructed. We received grant money to install our wayfinding signage. You now see the new blue signs coming into the city. But what we really haven't tackled is some of the minor, that's not minor, but I'll say the landscaping and the amenities along the street to connect. And so I think it's time to revisit that and we can look at our, you know, maybe encourage NCIP and other group, other funding mechanisms, mechanisms at the city to you know, fund those types of improvements. But I do want to say we have accomplished a lot. Sometimes we forget our accomplishments. And I think it's really fun. We actually had created this map of Monterey. You might, it was called Imagine Monterey. We can actually check off about sixty to seventy percent of the development sites. We haven't tackled two-way on Alvarado and all the improvements.
I think it's why I asked the question because we need to, well, I used to say, put it in concrete, but I, I've made too many changes in wet concrete. But we need to memorialize this process and some of this, these ideas and concepts into that bottom checklist on the one you already have outlined. What would be the best, best mechanism to do that?
Maybe we can come back with a progress report on what we have accomplished. And then lay out, you know, what's remaining to accomplishment, accomplish. And then, you know, create a checklist for that piece as well.
Kim, is it possible to revisit the downtown specific plan and create some type of appendix or an addendum that would incorporate the presentation that we just heard, just as a informational aspect of the plan?
Not that it's. Yeah. Let us think about that.
Because that, that way we actually have a physical reproduction of the presentation that we can fall back on. That would be easily accessible. Otherwise, after this meeting, what's going to happen? It's, it's just going to evaporate.
Kim, will any of this go to the city council?
Not at this point. This is the culmination of their quarter. I think it's finals week. My son's also completing both of them, all their finals right now. So it's finals week. But I know we're talking about future implementation and some different ideas on how to move that forward. So. How many of you are graduating this year? I see this as a four hundred level course, but you have another year left. Okay. Yeah, I just want to thank you. It's inspirational. I was also hoping to take a photograph of the whole Planning Commission with the students. And then maybe putting that on our website as, along with some of their work. If they're amenable, we can have their work products posted on our website and we can do that immediately.
Okay.
So if we, if we move on, first of all, I think the photograph is great because it memorializes what you guys have done. Secondly, the idea that we hope to try to implement your ideas into the plan that Kim was talking about. So that we can make progress and not just make a short memory that disappears. And so thank you all for your presentation and your work.
Were you going to make a?
Well, Kim says that we're going to be doing it, so I don't need to make a motion. But unless you come up with a suggestion, I, I, I trust your judgment, you're and, and Mr. Hill, so.
Yeah, I think we're, you know, it's, it's due time to bring back a progress report on our specific plans. And then identify the gaps and, and talk about future implementation.
In my mind, one of the important aspects is that our engineers have a copy of this material. So that in the future, when that blank piece of paper shows up on their desk and saying, make a project, they can say, here's some ideas I can use. So for that, that's. So I need to make a motion on that part. Okay, thank you.
Do we have anyone from the internet who's waving his hand in, in distress? No?
There are no attendees online.
I just have one final comment, which is, I'm very appreciative of the effort made by these teams to introduce as part of their vision, a robust public art component. And almost every single one of these ideas that we heard had that. And that's something that Monterey seriously lacks is a, is a public art, is a viable and robust public art program. And years ago, I was in talks with Mayor Robison about implementing a public art ordinance in the city of Monterey. And various things got in the way and, and it never materialized. But it might be something to, for me to look into again. Santa Cruz has a, an ordinance where they spell out how to finance the public art and the selection process and so forth. And that would be something that we can actually take immediate action on. And then look at some of the ideas that were presented and maybe start that way to implement some of this.
Let the photographs begin.
Yes. So I think before we do that, we'll go ahead and if the chair would like, we can go ahead and recess the meeting and we'll reconvene at seven o'clock.
Sounds good. Okay.
Thank you.
Bringing the Monterey City Planning Commission to order. Can I have a roll call, see who's here?
Sure. Commissioner Fletcher and Commissioner Latasa let us know they will be absent, but we have Chair Dawson.
Here.
Vice Chair Bluth.
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Present.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
And Commissioner Silva.
Here.
And I can announce staff members present if you'd like.
If you'd like, thank you.
Sure. We have Community Development Director Kim Cole, Planning Manager Levi Hill, Senior Associate Planner Chris Schmidt, Senior Associate Planner Kristy Sabdo, and myself, Recording Secretary Barrera. And if you'd like, I can go ahead and remind the public how to participate.
Remind us. Because we've forgotten.
I agree. Information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at isearchmonterey.org. Remote commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak. And a timer will be shown on the screen. If you are connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we recommend keeping phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. Thank you for participating in your city government.
Thank you. Do we have anyone in the audience or anyone online who's got a comment to make before the Planning Commission that is not on our agenda tonight?
There's one attendee online, however, their hand isn't raised.
Nobody hand raise? No? Okay, so let's move on with the party here. Let's consider 1047 Cass Street Use Permit Application UP 23.
First chair, actually, if we can act on the consent agenda first.
Oh, that's right. We didn't do that last time.
That's right.
Okay. Consent agenda. Does anyone have a comment on the consent agenda?
No.
On the minutes for last meeting? No? No, no.
No.
Okay, so can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
70 seconds. So. Now can we go forward? Consider.
We'll need a vote.
Roll call vote.
Sure. Chair Dawson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Silva.
Aye.
Great, those minutes have been approved.
Okay, can we get to Cass Street now? Consider 1047 Cass Street Use Permit Application UP 230215 to allow mixed use, one new residential unit and building height over 25 feet. Applicant White Sue Huang, Jersey Architecture Inc., property owner Brendan Connolly. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you Chair Dawson. My name is Chris Schmidt. I'm a Senior Associate Planner for the City of Monterey, and I've been working with the app and owners on this project. So we are looking at a use permit for a new residential unit at a site that contains an existing office building. And this use permit would also approve heights over 25 feet in the commercial office zone. So to begin, the staff recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the use permit. Just some basic background information about the site. The site is owned COES Commercial Office with the Emergency Shelter Overlay Zoning District and has a Commercial General Plan designation. The Commercial General Plan designation does allow mixed use up to 30 units per acre. This is primarily an office district along Cass Street, but we have seen over time more and more housing projects come in this neighborhood. And we may continue to see so. So project description. So this project involves the construction of a 1,289 square foot two-story single-family dwelling at the rear of the property. It includes new fill, a new driveway, parking, landscaping, and new trees. As I mentioned, there's an existing 1,100 square foot two-story office building. It was previously a single-family dwelling at the front of the lot. This is used by the property owner as an office, and the property owners are here today. The use permit is required for mixed use in the CO zone and heights over 25 feet. And I'll note that the maximum height with approval of the use permit is 30 feet. So it only allows an increase by five. And so here we see a site plan. On the left-hand side is Cass Street. You can see that existing office to remain. As I mentioned, there'd be new landscaping, new driveway, two new parking spaces, and then the new two-story house at the rear with new landscaping and new trees. Here we see a floor plan. This is the first floor is on the right-hand side, and then the second floor is a loft on the, and you can see that on the left-hand side. And here's an elevation. And you know, I think it's worth noting, and I think the applicant or owners rather can explain in a little bit more detail, they intend to use this as kind of their first project to use a new construction methodology or new system rather that they hope to expand and bring more housing units to the peninsula. And so I'll let them speak to that a little bit more, but this is generally the basic design. And what I've noted here is they are adding a little bit of fill at the rear to correct some drainage issues that they have here. If you can see my red line here, the new dwelling unit would be at its max point about 29 and a half feet from the existing rate. And that's how the city measures height is based on existing or proposed, whichever. or proposed, whichever is lower in terms of grades. The first finding for approval for the use permit is that the proposed use is in accord with the objectives of this chapter and the purposes of the zone. Staff made this finding, this project includes mixed use, which is permitted by use permit, and it includes the required parking and meets the development standards for the CO zone. The second finding is that the proposed use and the proposed conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will be consistent with the general plan, will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighborhood of such use, and will not be detrimental to properties or improvements in the vicinity to or to the general welfare of the city. Generally, it's not going to have major impacts to the surrounding area. There was actually a single-family dwelling at the rear of the property before that the applicants had previously demolished to make way for this new project. So staff was able to make this finding. It is consistent with the commercial general plan land use designation and allowed density. I think I noted in the staff report that this site would allow, I think, up to seventeen units. Of course, they're only proposing one here today, and then also parking is provided. Lastly, the last finding is that the proposed use will comply with any specific condition required for that use. The only conditions that staff has included are typical standard conditions for construction projects of this size. So with that, staff makes the recommendation to approve the project. The property owners are here in person, and the applicant, the architect, is online. So thank you.
Questions for staff? Peter?
Thank you, Chris. Real quick here, you mentioned that there was a single-family residence that was demolished on the rear portion of the site. And sure enough, I went on Google Earth and discovered indeed there was because the last imagery from Google Earth shows the house. Couple of questions related to that. In looking at the engineering plans, that there's a site utility plan that indicates a new water service that would be serving the new residents. And my question is, why would there be a new water service if there was already an existing house and presumably sufficient water service already?
It's a good question. I would direct it to the applicant and owners, not.
Thank you.
Mike? On the total height, was there any alternatives to the 35 feet?
It's 30 feet. They had actually proposed, when they first submitted the application or when they were in talks with submitting with the city prior to submitting the application, the height was actually greater than 30 feet, and they had considered applying for variance. In this case, we didn't discuss any lower heights since then.
Well, no.
This seems pretty straightforward. Are we here tonight because they need a use permit so they can have commercial and residential on the same lot?
Correct.
Even though there was previously commercial and residential on the same lot?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commercial, residential, residential, residential.
Okay.
Okay. Not a mess?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we hear from the applicant?
Sure, the applicant's online, and I'll go ahead and allow them to speak.
Can you hear us now?
I've asked them to unmute.
This is Todd Jersey? Yeah.
Hi, this is Todd Jersey, the architect, but I am not the applicant. The applicant is the developer, Brendan Connolly and Diane Coward. They should be present?
We could hear from you, Todd.
Okay, sure. I'm sorry, I have been, tell me again your question. I am here.
To speak in favor of this project.
Oh, speaking in favor, I mean, I did hear one of the, of course, I'm in favor, I'm the architect for the project. You know, I just read through Chris's wonderful staff report, and it seems pretty clear. This is sort of a perfunctory, performa view for you guys to look at and approve. The exciting thing for me as the architect is that the is the mention that Chris mentioned, the we are using a new building methodology is probably a good enough term. It is a kit of parts called the Shabusa system. And it is a pre-cut kit. I know some of you might be familiar with the old Sears homes. They were actually brought in on a flatbed truck. Everything was precision cut, and they were assembled on-site, and they were affordable and wonderful, and it was very sad. They stopped doing these. Shabusa's bringing something similar back to the fore. And Monterey, the City of Monterey, and you guys and us are fortunate recipients of the very first Shabusa project in California. They do have several, I believe, five, five, six, seven of these projects in Louisiana successfully built. This methodology does allow for a lower cost for construction. And therefore, one of the great things about the applicants here, which are Regen West, is that they plan to pass the cost savings for construction onto the marketplace and provide lower-than-market housing. And that's their mission. So it's a pretty exciting blend of mission-driven developer with a really unique and exciting, lower-cost, high-quality. I should also say that the Shabusa system is extremely high-quality. You know, one of the issues that I have as an architect, finding modular systems is, is there are quality issues and that I cannot control because these are factory-built homes. The Shabusa doesn't suffer from that, and I am actually part of the Shabusa team now. And I'm finding the level of quality and detail and fit and finish to be excitingly and refreshingly high-end. So we're getting a high-end, exciting, sustainable project at a lower cost for the city, and it's exciting to be the first ones out the gate. I hope that helps.
Well, thank you, Todd.
Sure, my pleasure.
Is there anyone else out there who'd like to have a word with us?
Can we question the applicant, please? Good evening, Planning Commission, planning staff. Thank you for having us tonight. First to respond to your question, Commissioner Silva. There are, in fact, two existing water meters on-site, an existing water service for the rear unit. So there is no new water service to accommodate this proposal. I want to note that Diane and I, Diane Coward behind me, we started a company called Revision West with the aims of making a difference, as our architect Todd Jersey noted. That's why we're here tonight. With this little project, just a single-family residence, we are actually intending to launch something much bigger. So far, we've had really great collaborative experience with the planning staff. And we've received helpful guidance and advice, bringing us to this point, hopefully with a smooth process forward. Tonight, we are here to ask for your approval, and we'd like to take this project to the ARC and building permit application status and ideally start to build this this spring. And like I said, launch something much greater in the coming years.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Any, anyone have a question for the man?
I have four topics that I'd like to talk about, four separate topics.
Shall I stay up here?
I think these are more technical in nature, and they would probably be best suited to be addressed to your architect.
Very well.
So in looking at the site plan, we have a fire access road or driveway that to me appears to conflict with the fire code in that there's no hammerhead at the end for turnaround. And I was wondering if there was any conversation with the fire department about this.
That's probably, this is the architect, that's probably a question that Chris can answer. Chris, can you weigh on that, or Brendan?
Yeah, if I may, I did meet with the Fire Prevention Officer Priwi. She came out to the site. We did a site walk, and she determined that we would not need a fire turnaround on-site or even a dry standpipe. There is a fire hydrant at the front corner of the property on the sidewalk, and that the fire department would be able to make their access from the street.
Okay, very good. My second topic deals with ADA issues. And the site plan shows a new parking space for the existing commercial, but it's not accessible. My understanding of the California Building Code, Chapter 11B, is that when you add parking for a commercial use, the ratio of accessible parking is one accessible parking space for every one to 25 spaces you're adding. So you're adding one, so that would trigger, in my opinion, an ADA accessible space.
I think that's a question for Chris.
Yeah, that wasn't a comment that came up from our building staff when we did our initial review, but it's something I'll make note of, and they'll certainly consider it when the project goes through building permit.
Yeah, and if that indeed is the case, then you would have to have potentially another parking space for non-accessible so that you then have an ADA accessible space, an aisle, which would be eight feet wide for vans, and then another parking space. So all of a sudden, your single parking space becomes three times as big, which would potentially eliminate your retention basin as well as the tree that you're trying to save. So these are things that I'm looking at that are somewhat problematic. And let's see. Lastly, the drainage plan is predicated on using an electric sump pump for draining the retention basin. But yet, there's no generator in case of a power outage. And typically, when you use a sump pump for stormwater, you have to have a generator. Generators can be problematic because they emit a lot of noise, and neighbors can complain. So they have to be, the acoustical aspects of the generator have to be addressed. So those are the items that I have here. And I think these should be looked at seriously because I think that if you do pursue a building permit, these items are going to probably come up and result in a different site plan than the one that we're seeing here.
Understood. Thank you for your promise.
Anyone else?
He covered it.
Okay. Andy, no?
No, no, no.
Okay. We don't have any, do we have anyone on the internet who's like to speak to us?
The architect still has their hands raised, but I see no other hands raised.
Sorry, I'll lower that.
Oh. Okay. Um. And we have no more comments? Nobody, nobody? How about comments from the commissioners? Reps questions?
I'll start. I'm going to recommend that we approve the application with one condition, that if during the course of the building permit application phase, the site plan is significantly changed, that there'll be an opportunity for either planning staff or Planning Commission to revisit.
Of course.
I'll second it.
Was that a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion.
And second.
Any comments on the motion?
No.
No? Me neither. Can we have a roll call vote?
Sure, Chair Dawson.
Yes.
Chair, Vice Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Silva.
Aye.
That motion carries with a vote of five. The decision is appealable to the City Council within 10 days, and we have applications in our planning office.
And don't try it at 11 days. No. Okay, so moving, moving forward with alacrity.
Congratulations.
Okay, consider 2330 Del Monte Avenue Use Permit Application UP 230124 to allow a new U-Haul box warehouse building with a maximum height of 32 feet, 29-foot ridge with a three-foot terrapin, a floor area of 20,708 square feet, and the relocation of outdoor activities/storage of U-Haul rental vehicle of a new U-Haul U-Box warehouse and exterior alterations to the site subject to the D2 Developments General Overlay District Tree Removal Permit ART 23-0106 for the removal of eight palm trees and five red flowering gum trees and adopt the mitigated negative declaration for the project. Applicant Catherine Avila with Avila Construction, property owner Oxford Life Insurance Company, Commercial General Plan Designation. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair Dawson and Commissioners. I'm Christie Sabdo, Senior Associate Planner with the City of Monterey. I'll be presenting 2330 Del Monte Avenue, the proposal for a use permit, architectural review permit, tree removal permit for the construction of a new U-Haul U-Box warehouse facility and an initial study mitigated negative declaration. The staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt resolutions for the use permit, architectural review permit, tree removal permit, and also the mitigated negative declaration. The project site is located in the commercial land use designation of the general plan. The zoning is in the C3 D2 Design Overlay District and ES for Emergency Shelter. It is located in the Via Del Monte neighborhood. And just want to describe a little bit where it's located. So it's along Del Monte Avenue and between Del Monte and Highway One. Ramona Avenue is off of Del Monte Avenue, and you take Ramona Avenue, which turns into the Highway One on-ramp to get on the highway. And on the other side of Ramona Avenue, I mean, you know, I labeled that wrong, I'm sorry. That's Hannon Avenue right here. And then on the other side is Ramona Avenue.
It's on the other side of the Napa store.
Yeah, sorry about that. The project site is located in the East Del Monte Area Plan, which is a commercial plan. The project is located in Zones Four and Five of this plan. The purpose of the East Del Monte Area Plan is to implement general plan policies by the preparation of design and landscape standards, which upgrade the appearance of the area and provide parking standards which will reduce the impacts of on-street parking. So the property is in the C3 District, which requires a use permit for not only, well, for three things that is part of this project, a large project, building height, and outdoor storage activities. So a project that has any building with three stories or a height in excess of 25 feet requires a use permit in the C3 District. This project has a height over 25 feet. Large projects, any use occupying more than 5,000 square feet of total floor area in the C3 District requires a use permit. The square footage is over 5,000 square feet. And outdoor activities, a use permit is required in the C3 District for all outdoor storage activities. So there'll be outdoor storage and display of the U-Haul rental vehicles. The project is in the D2 Overlay District, which requires Planning Commission and Architectural Review Committee approval of all new construction and exterior alterations and additions. Conditions of approval. Conditions of approval may impose requirements that are more restrictive than those prescribed by applicable base district regulations. If the planning commission finds these requirements are necessary to have a harmonious relationship with the existing and planned uses in the vicinity and with sensitive environmental resources. Applicant Catherine Avila with Avila Construction applied for a use permit, architectural review permit, uh, tree removal permit for the demolition of an existing six thousand two hundred and fifty square foot existing warehouse and the construction of a new twenty thousand seven hundred and eight square foot warehouse building to accommodate U-Haul U-boxes and other site improvements along Del Monte Avenue. I just wanted to show the site in its existing condition. This is along Del Monte Avenue. You'll see a landscape planter at the front signage. This is the long Hanan Avenue, which again turns into the Highway One on-ramp. And you could see a little bit of landscaping as well along Hanan. Currently, their rental vehicles are like adjacent to the Del Monte planter and Hanan. This is on the opposite side on Ramona. Um, you can see their existing trash enclosure and some of the vehicles. And then here's further along, um, the Highway One on-ramp, you can, and then you eventually get to this on-ramp here and you can see the existing fencing and some of the storage of the vehicles. And then this is all from Highway One, so that you could see the, some of the existing landscaping and the existing fencing. And here's the proposed project, so the, um, you can see in the dark orange here is the existing office that's going to remain uh, in the, um, dashed area. That's the existing warehouse building that's going to be demolished. And then in its place, um, a new larger building. There will be enhanced landscaping along Del Monte Avenue, um, Hanan Avenue, and then along Highway One um, to screen, um, the building from Highway One. It's, it's not completely screened, but, um, it screens at least the rental vehicles and, um, it helps with the visual impacts of the project. The outdoor, uh, display of rental vehicles will be in between the, uh, landscape buffer along Highway One and the new building. And a visitor parking will be along Del Monte Avenue. Um, so right now they have rental vehicles that are kind of on display and you can see them from Del Monte Avenue and Hanan. But this is going to be just visitor parking. And landscaping is going to be enhanced along Del Monte Avenue to offer that screening. And then there's going to be a bio-retention basin in blue here along Ramona Avenue. Uh, there is going to be a loading dock here and a new, newly located, um, trash enclosure. Other site improvements, uh, include the stormwater improvements, removal and a replacement of eighty thousand square feet of existing pavement, repaving and new striping of parking spaces, additional fence screening along Highway One. And I have, um, samples for you when I get to talking about that, but they would be in black. A relocation of outdoor storage of U-Haul vehicles for rent, installation of electric vehicle parking spaces and relocation of outdoor storage and display of U-Haul rental vehicles. So here is the proposed landscaping. Um, there are palm trees that are being removed and, um, those are located, um, where you see those in, they're labeled palm trees here. And then the red gum flowering trees, which is a type of eucalyptus tree, are also being removed. And there's, um, a one-to-one mitigation ratio for the palm trees and three-to-one for the gum trees. So that requires twenty-three replacement trees. Nine of them will be located along the Del Monte and Hanan Avenue landscape planters with fourteen along, new trees along, um, this high, the Highway One landscape buffer. They, the trees will be either Monterey pine or Monterey cypress. And then there's also native bushes and then some other non-native as well, but mostly native. And you can see here what you could, this is kind of an image showing the new trees that would be lo- located and what the view would be from the highway, including the fence that they propose. Um, I showed you a picture of it with like the black, um, open metal fence. And they would add one of these perforated metal in black, um, to further screen the rental vehicles. And then the enhanced landscaping would also help with that. So you can, um, kind of just barely see the building from the highway. They're also proposing lighting wall sconces along the new warehouse building on all sides except for, um, the side facing, um, Del Monte Avenue because there is no access on that location and the building code's not going to require it. Uh, pole lighting will replace existing pole lighting, uh, but there will be, um, less pole lights than there are currently. And they will all be, um, dark sky compliant and downlit. Here's the northeast elevation facing Hanan Avenue. And I wanted to kind of describe some of the building materials here. Uh, the new warehouse building will be primarily finished with vertical insulated metal panels, uh, stucco embossed in the color warm white. So that's the primary color of the new building. You see where the U-Haul sign is here, that's the existing building that's remaining, and then the rest of it is the new building. And then there will be wood accents, accents in the color walnut, uh, to provide interest and warmth to the building. On, uh, there will be parapet caps, um, so there'll be chocolate brown color parapet caps above the, um, metal panels and then the aquarium blue above the, um, the wood look accents here. So, uh, the building would be approximately thirty-two feet in height from natural grade at the lowest natural grade, approximately a maximum height of twenty-nine feet uh, with a three-foot parapet. There will be metal doors to provide access along the southwest and northeast elevation. Uh, the roof would be a pre-engineered metal roof, uh, sloped quarter inch per foot. So I'll share, this is the elevation, um, facing the neighboring property and along Del Monte Avenue, southwest elevation facing Ramona. And the southeast elevation, um, faces Highway One. And also, um, there are also these, um, six-inch metal fins in blue and green just to provide interest. Showing again, uh, materials and colors a little closer up here. So there are, uh, parking requirements, um, that are required through the Monterey City Code and also the East Del Monte Area Plan, so I'm going to summarize those here. Uh, the Monterey City Code, uh, requires parking for the existing uses to remain and the proposed uses, which would require twenty-three parking spaces. The East Del Monte Area Plan has more stringent parking standards than the Monterey City Code, so, um, we have to go with that. Um, so taking into account the existing building and uses, the new warehouse addition, um, fifty-four parking spaces are required. And this came to the attention of staff, um, kind of after we had reviewed the site plan. So we added a condition of approval, asking for, um, an additional thirty-one spaces. The project is located in Zone Seven, um, of the, um, Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. And the, um, Airport Land Use Commission did find on November thirteenth that the project is consistent with that plan, subject to one condition of approval, that the, um, prior to issuance of a building permit, an exterior lighting plan shall be reviewed and approved by the applicable airport manager prior to issuance of any construction permits. All exterior lighting and sources of glare shall be unobtrusive, downlit, harmonious with the local area and constructed or located so that only the intended area is illuminated and off-site glare is fully controlled. So I have added that as a special condition of approval. So we'll go through the findings for the use permit, architecture review permit, tree removal permit, and then talk about, um, the initial study. So use permit finding one, um, the proposed use is in accord, is in accord with the objectives of this chapter and the purposes of the zone. So the C-three district is intended, uh, to meet the needs of residents with locally serving commercial areas by providing for such services as automobile sales, repair services, building materials, and includes warehousing, storage and similar uses. The project is consistent with the objectives of the zoning ordinance and purposes of the zone. Uh, the project is allowed under Warehousing Storage Limited Use, which is intended to provide the provision of storage space for household or commercial goods within an enclosed building without direct public access to individual storage spaces. So this is the case here, there will be no, um, public access to these storage spaces. They will be delivered to people's homes or businesses and then picked up. The C-three district also requires a use permit for, um, as I indicated before, the floor area, building heights and outdoor activities. Proposed height of the new warehouse building is thirty-two feet in height from natural grade at the lowest, um, grade. It's twenty-nine feet, a twenty-nine foot ridge height with a three-foot parapet. There is an exception in the Monterey City Code that allows for, um, parapet walls to extend not more than four feet above the building height limit. Uh, therefore, the proposed height can be considered to exclude the parapet height, bringing the proposed maximum, um, building height to twenty-nine feet. Approval of the height requires compliance with the standard use permit findings and also findings justifying an exception to the permitted height on the basis of achieving city priorities adopted by the city council resolution and compliance with existing area plan policies and city design guidelines. Um, I will go over those additional findings, um, after the use permit findings. So use permit finding two, uh, the proposed use is consistent with the commercial land use designation, um, so that general plan as the use would continue as a commercial operation. Uh, Del Monte Avenue is designated a scenic entrance. Um, applicable policies, um, include general plan policy H-ten, which requires developments visible from scenic entrances to blend into the natural surroundings. The general plan policy F-six requires screening of commercial areas along Del Monte Avenue. And general plan policy G-two states that landscaping should favor native species. So you can see here that there is an enhanced landscaping along Del Monte Avenue, meeting all of these findings and, um, the trees will be native, so either pine or cypress. And bushes will be either native or non-native, but together with the bushes and trees, it will be primarily native. So it does meet those, um, policies. The city's general plan identifies special places which are considered to have significant visual resources. General plan policy H-nine states landscape buffers should be provided at least a hundred feet in width from the ultimate planned right-of-way of state-designated highways. So Highway One is not an officially state-designated highway, so this policy doesn't apply. It's an eligible, um, state-designated highway, but it is not an official, um, highway, state-designated scenic highway. So, but I did want to, um, make sure you're aware that the applicant has gone above and beyond for this project. They initially had proposed the warehouse closer to Highway One, they ended up moving it back to, um, to minimize any visual impacts and they've enhanced, um, landscaping and just has, they've done a really good job, um, trying to make sure that we have, you know, screening and we're minimizing visual impacts. Um, so this is, use permit finding two is continued here. Um, all properties adjacent to the site are commercial. Residential properties are located across from Highway One, approximately two hundred and sixty feet from the project site. Uh, the proposed project will not be detrimental to these, um, homes or with anyone residing or working in the adjacent neighborhood as, um, it's just delivery of the U-Haul U-boxes. There will not be, um, extra, um, you know, there won't, public will not be visiting the site, there will not be a lot of in-and-out, uh, noise, et cetera. It's all a use that's inside, um, other than the, um, loading and unloading. The proposed storage and delivery of U-Haul U-boxes from the new warehouse building, um, as I said, will not be gen- detrimental to the adjacent neighborhoods and people residing or working there. Sorry, I just, sorry for that. Use permit finding three, that the proposed use will comply with any special condition for that use. Uh, there are special conditions of approval that I'll, um, summarize later in the presentation. There is an additional finding for buildings in excess of twenty-five feet, uh, that the proposed project, construction of a new building in excess of twenty-five feet will achieve city priorities adopted by the city council resolution and compliance with existing area plan policies and city design guidelines. Um, so the proposed use is consistent with applicable adopted city priorities adopted by the city council per resolution on December seventh, twenty-twenty-one. So, um, protecting our environment policy is a policy adopted by the city council. The project is consistent with this policy as it would expand access to electric vehicle infrastructure. The project would include installation of electric vehicle parking spaces per the twenty-twenty-two California Energy Code EV charging requirements. The project is consistent with the fiscal stewardship policy. The project would contribute to enhancing the economic vitality of the city uh, through site improvements and providing a use that can benefit residents or incoming residents. The project is consistent with the East Del Monte Area Plan. So there are two applicable policies in that East Del Monte Area Plan um, that, that is, that are applicable to this project. So policy one, upgrade the appearance of commercial properties fronting on Del Monte Avenue. The project is consistent with this, uh, and includes enhanced landscaping and the landscape planter along Del Monte Avenue. And the display of rental vehicles will no longer be located in the visitor parking area along Del Monte Avenue. Policy two, provide onsite parking so that parking is not forced onto the streets. The project originally exceeded that East Del Monte Area Plan parking requirements with seventy-five parking spaces. Then subsequently, the applicant proposed to reduce the parking to twenty-three. Um, but as I said, staff determined that the East Del Monte Area Plan has more stringent parking requirements. So we have a condition of approval, um, requiring them to increase the parking by thirty-one spaces when they apply for the building permit and staff will check that. Um, the project is located in both Area Four and Five of the East Del Monte Area Plan. So Area Four, um, it is consistent with Area Four design standards, which requires landscaping within the fifteen-foot setback required along Del Monte Avenue. The site layout exceeds this fifteen-foot requirement. Along the Del Monte Avenue frontage, the deep parking stalls have been eliminated and enhanced with landscaping, um, to screen the commercial area, consistent with the standard. And flat selections are consistent with the East Del Monte Area Landscape Standards or Guidelines. Uh, Area Five of the East Del Monte Area Plan is the area that, um, where the new warehouse building will be located. Um, the maximum allowable building height in this area is thirty feet. And the proposed new warehouse would be thirty-two feet in height from the natural grade at the lowest grade. However, as I indicated, there's exceptions to the building heights with the parapet walls that really the proposed height is twenty-nine feet, so it meets the thirty-foot requirement. Uh, the property shall include a visual upgrade of the site and building and shall, um, confirm, conform to the East Del Monte Area Plan parking standards. Uh, the site is being visually enhanced by demolishing existing older building with a new warehouse with a modern design and enhanced landscaping along Del Monte Avenue, additional landscape and fence screening along Highway One and stormwater improvements. Plan requires more stringent parking standards, as I indicated, and I have added a condition of approval. Um, architectural review findings. The proposed, um, siting form, mass and architectural style are appropriate for the project site, immediate area and the city. Uh, in terms of siting, uh, the proposed new warehouse building would be sited in the same location as the existing, um, warehouse building to be demolished. This is the best location for the warehouse as it minimizes visibility from Highway One. Uh, massing, the proposed massing of the new warehouse building would be larger. However, the size of the warehouse is appropriate for the size of the project site and is compatible with other commercial buildings, um, in the area along Del Monte Avenue. And the architectural style is compatible with that of existing buildings onsite and in the area and include vertical, um, insulated metal panels, um, stucco embossed in the, in a nice warm color um, with, um, accents at each end of the building, the wood look accents. And, um, they have the metal blue fins as well. And they have the metal blue fins as well on the stucco warm white color. And then we have the parapet caps and a metal roof. Proposed project will not in reasonably impair the views, privacy, or living environment currently enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity. The maximum height of the building, as I indicated, will be actually twenty-nine feet. Will be compatible with the surrounding commercial buildings and would be partially visible from Del Monte Avenue, Hanan, Ramona Avenue, and Highway one. So due to safety concerns regarding story poles and netting, the building official did waive the story pole requirements due to safety and the applicant installed four-foot-by-four-foot banners along Del Monte Avenue, Hanan, and Ramona Avenue. Staff has not received any public comments on the proposal. The proposed project is substantially consistent with the general plan and adopted area plan. And as I had previously indicated, under other findings. The proposed finished colors, materials, landscape, lighting, fencing, and all other exterior, exterior features are appropriate for the project site, area, and the city. The existing office building would remain and the new warehouse building has been designed to complement and modernize the existing design. Project includes the removal of thirteen trees total and would require twenty-three replacement trees. A special condition of approval has been added to ensure all required twenty-three trees are shown on the landscape plan submitted for building permit approval. And exterior lighting consists of wall, sconce lighting, and sight lighting. And these will all be downlit and you know, fully shielded, dark sky compliant.
Wall scones?
What did I say?
Wall scones.
Oh, wall scones. Wall sconces.
And cinnamon.
So overall, the proposed finished colors, materials, and landscaping and lighting, fencing, and other features are appropriate for the project site, immediate area, and the city. We have tree removal permit findings. In situations where healthy trees prevents reasonable development of permitted uses, the trees may be approved for removal. The removal of trees is needed as it would prevent reasonable development of the permitted use. Insistent with the tree preservation ordinance, the palm trees would require the one-to-one mitigation ratio and the red gum flower entries would require three-to-one, requiring a total of twenty-three trees to be replanted. So now we have the environmental review. So this project required an initial study. An initial study mitigated negative declaration was also circulated for public review for the required thirty-day public review period from October fifth to November sixth. The initial study identifies that the project could potentially result in significant environmental impacts associated with biological resources, cultural resources, greenhouse gas emissions, and mandatory findings of significance. Mitigation measures have been required that will reduce the potential impacts to less than significant. One comment letter was received from Monterey County requesting that the project go before the ALUC, and it has done that. So I'll just go over the impacts and the mitigation measures. Impacts to migratory birds protected by the Migratory Bird Treaty Act would have the potential to occur. And mitigation measure one requires pre-construction bird surveys prior to construction. Impacts to cultural resources as a result of ground disturbing activities. So there are the standard cultural resource mitigation measures in the event that cultural resources are discovered. And to ensure the project's consistency with the greenhouse gas performance standards. Performance standard one, no natural gas, and performance standard two, electric vehicle ready. Mitigation measure three requires that the final improvement plans demonstrate that no permanent natural gas infrastructure will be installed to conserve the new building. Mitigation measure four requires that the final improvement plans show EV support infrastructure consistent with the Tier Two standards. That support improvements prior to occupancy permit. Staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt resolutions. The first step would be to adopt the mitigated negative, negative declaration for the U-Haul U-Box storage facility project at twenty-two, three-three-zero Del Monte Avenue. And then approving the second resolution of use permit application, architecture review, tree removal permits for the project. And just to summarize, the special conditions of approval was the special condition one is the ALUC requirement regarding exterior lighting. Two is that the applicant shall show fifty-four parking spaces in compliance with the East Del Monte Area Plan. Three is that the landscape plan should show the twenty-three replacement trees. And four is that the planning division shall conduct a site visit verifying all twenty-three replacement trees have been planted. And that is, that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for questions and the applicant team is here as well.
Questions?
Peter? For the parking, the calculation for the fifty-four spaces came from the square footage of the new warehouse.
Existing and new.
And since the new warehouse is going to have any public access, does it make sense to have that as a requirement? Because there'll be no only one person, few people going into the building.
I had the same thought. Unfortunately, the standard is still there. Kind of, it doesn't say regardless, you know. It's, it's based on use, so unfortunately, it's standard. We have to follow.
Just blank spaces.
As a follow-up to that, public access was the only question that I had. Under what circumstances would the public access this site?
Sure, for the existing use, which is the rental, to rent the U-Haul vehicles, the trucks.
But not to go in the building?
Well, there is an office that they could go into to rent the vehicles, but it has nothing to do with the new warehouse and the U-Haul U-Box. They won't be able to go to the site to rent those.
Thank you.
Peter? Thank you, Christie. Do you happen to have a slide that shows the existing site plan?
Beginning.
Right there on the cover.
I don't, yeah, I didn't make a copy of that, unfortunately. But my question relates to Ramona Avenue. And my recollection is that there is currently a way to get into that parking lot from Ramona. But the new plan does not allow for that?
There's a new curb cut along Ramona Avenue.
There is, okay. It looks like it's shaded green, as if it's landscaping or something.
It showed in-and-out arrows.
So that, that apron, that curb is going to remain then as an access point?
And fire access?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, this is fire access here in between the building and the blue.
I'm sorry, what, can you point that out again?
Yeah, the fire access would be located here.
But does that connect to Ramona Avenue? Right through there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
I shouldn't have put the green there.
Usually for large structures, they require, as I recall, two access points.
Correct.
I only see the one.
Yeah.
There's one on Hanan.
There's one on Hanan.
Okay, thank you.
Well, there's two on Hanan. You can go in and out on Hanan.
It is, there is two, yeah.
More questions? Mike? Replacement of the trees. What size replacement trees are going to be implemented?
Fifteen gallon?
And these are all, right now, matured trees? Guessing ones?
I don't know if they're all mature.
Last time I looked, they were all, looked like mature trees.
It might be.
Well, that's if they're trees versus shrub, that's what I'm talking about here. There seems to be more attention to the Highway one side as far as screening than to the Del Monte side. Even in, on the back part of the lot there. So we're not, we're not paying attention to masking on the Del Monte side? I know, but at the far end. On the Hanan, the Hanan corner.
So the blue dots are the new trees.
Okay, so those are going to be the fifteen gallon? Okay, second question. I'm still a little confused on the twenty-three fifty-four. What is the city recommending?
Well, we have to go with the most stringent parking standards. So the East Del Monte Area Plan has the most stringent standards and it's fifty-four parking spaces. They're only proposing twenty-three, so thirty-one additional spaces are required. And that's why we have a condition of approval for them to update the site plan at the building permit stage.
Has there been a parking study to determine whether that is overparked or underparked? Or is that just simply a road standard that you're?
It's just the standard that has to be met.
Well, if they're not going to be parking the U-Hauls along the front street front and they're going to be putting them alongside and I happen to know that they sometimes get overflow, they get too many units coming in or going out. Where are you going to park anything extra?
Yeah, well, we can, we can ask the applicant about that, but they're showing space for outdoor storage of their vehicles and they they have indicated it's enough space for what they need, but we can ask them.
Okay. Oh, I talked to him. Bob?
I already have my question.
I have a question. You're calling for EV parking spots. There's only one guy going to come to this place to work. And so the EV spots seem to me are extraneous. It, it, maybe they were going to be open twenty-four hours a day and be on the list for all of the EV charging stations. That would be one thing, but if they're not, we're, we're just, we're just building infrastructure for nothing. Actually, I might submit, we need the applicant if they're going to put EV vehicles or EV. There you go.
Well, the EV is required through state law.
I know. That's my problem. Okay. No more? No more? Maybe we could have the applicant or someone from the
Sure.
From the
Hi there, I'm Catherine Avala. I'm the applicant of record and this is Cam. He runs the U-Haul of South Bay operation. We also have Carl and Rachel from his team here as well as Paul Davis, the architect, and Mike Avala on the phone. Unfortunately, he was sick. But if there's any technical constructability questions, I will
Paul should be sitting up here with us.
So we're, we're very pleased to be here. We started this process, I think, a little over a year ago with a much different project. As Christie mentioned, it was previously located up against the highway side of the site. It was taller, had a higher capacity. It was a more intensive use. And through discussion with staff, we've gotten the point that we're here today. So excited to be here finally at this decision point. Staff worked really hard and really diligently, so thank you, Christie, for that. Really good responsiveness, just like we always see out of the City of Monterey staff. So if you have any further questions, we're here to take them. I do want to answer a couple of items that came up earlier on the topic of fire access. Sheet C three of the civil plan, which I think was included in your packet, shows those whole hose pull lengths. Those are in dotted red line. So you can look at that if you want a little more information. And I think Cam has comments to make on what they do with overflow vehicles if there is excess capacity.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. So what we have is new tools in place, not our facilities. I know that you've probably seen facilities in the past where you go in there and there's trucks out on the street, parked out on the street. And so we have a new tool we call Lot Limits. And so what we do is we're able to restrict the amount of equipment that's going into a certain facility. And we redirect those customers, you know, to other local or other little dealerships that we have in neighboring cities as well, too. And that's been a really good tool in our, in our business model at this location is to actually, is actually reduce the amount of trucks that we have there. And at the same time, to get more into our U-Box business, which is more of something that this community is really, is ramping up in. There's a lot of moving in, there's a lot of moving out, especially with the military as well, too. And with that, our plan is to reduce the amount of vehicles overall and have more U-Box customers. And we plan to accomplish that by putting in lot limits and simply just moving those trucks to other locations. So we could definitely limit the amount of equipment that goes into that location. And with the warehouse being bigger, we will have to.
Mike, how many trucks do you normally have onsite?
For instance, this, I drove by there earlier.
I know, now it's none, but
Yeah, I went by there earlier today and there was about twenty-six. And then I've driven by in the past and there's been fifty to sixty or so.
Okay, your parking lot going to have various sized parking lots for the various sized trucks?
What we generally do is we have long rows and we call them shunting rows. And so we don't really, we put certain display lots where we park our equipment. But generally, what we do is we call it shunting. And so when we clean the vehicle after rental, we'll put it into a really long row and we'll, and we'll shunt it there. The next customer comes in, immediately picks it from there and takes it. So it's just more of like a a stopping station, if you will.
Okay, when someone brings in a truck, a twenty-four-foot truck, where do they drive them to?
They will pull it directly to the front of the business and then a representative will come out, greet them.
There's no parking place for it? It just?
They stop there. We come out, we clean it, and it temporarily stops there. And then from there, we move it into our shunting lane. And then as soon as the next person comes in, we'll take it from there. And so we call it more of like a temporary stop.
It's always onsite?
Correct.
Yeah, but and if you have two coming in at the same time, we got problems.
Yeah, our rows are pretty long, so we just stack them one behind the other, behind the other, but yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
A while ago, I had car repairs, body, body shop repairs done at Roberts.
Roberts, yeah, okay.
Which is right across
Right, right behind us, yeah.
Ramona.
And I recall at that time that they were using your lot for overflow.
Yeah, we're just being neighbors, just being good neighbors.
And then if that's the case, would that impact the deficiency of parking? I mean, how, how do you? Do you give them a lot, a certain amount of spaces to use every day?
You know what? He asked if he could park some of his vehicle over, over on our side. And I was just being a nice guy. At first, we, we did butt a little bit of heads because they would automatically just come and park on our lot. And myself and the local manager went over and talked to him and said, hey, just let us know if you need to park here once in a while, not a big deal. He said, okay, great, no problem. If I need to move these vehicles, he said, I have a solution to put them somewhere, so.
I'm raising this just because, you know, we have, we have a a question about what is the appropriate amount of parking and the code is saying one thing and you're proposing something else. But yet we also have another element to this whole parking story that is being impacted by a neighboring property owner. And perhaps you know, maybe some consideration could be made to limit that impact.
I think he may be taking on a lot more business since he knows he has my lot to park in. So I think that I'd have to have that conversation with him and he may have to ramp down quite a bit.
All right.
Because he, he didn't have that many vehicles there before. It started off at about three or four and then kept going and going. So I haven't said much to him. I've been just being a good neighbor, but I'll have to have that conversation with him.
No, I'm, I'm fine.
So fifty-four spaces is in the apartment?
Yeah.
Do we have, we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Thank you. Yes, that, do we have anyone in the in the great outland there that would like to speak?
There are three attendees, but there are no hands raised.
No hands raised.
And yeah, once again, to find the information to join.
Remind, remind
Remind, remind us them about the, about the.
Right.
Procedure.
Information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at isearchmonterey.org. Remote commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we recommend keeping phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. There are still no hands raised.
Nope. No one, no one raised hands?
No raised hands.
Okay, so let's bring it back to the, to the. Table here and uh comments, please.
I'm going to make a motion to approve what the conditions as presented.
Also.
Second for Bob.
And just as a clarification, there's two motions. One is approving the use permit and one is adopting a mitigated negative declaration.
With all the conditions.
With four special conditions of approval.
Yes, and Seth will request that you make the motion to adopt the uh ISM and D.
Can we do all of that with one vote?
Uh, we prefer to.
Don't think so, no.
Let's take care of one first and then do the other.
Okay. So which one, which one was?
Yeah, you want to do the comments now?
I would comment on the motion.
Yes, sir.
Uh, part of the issue comes down for the public certification. We get surprised periodically by the state with their requirements. And the natural gas requirement is one of them. There's very little, very little publication of the state now. Band-aiding what kind of equipment that we can put in our buildings and homes. This is one of them. And it's not just this, it's the state taking actions to restrict. Locals on what we can and cannot do. And this is one of, another one of them. If you get to talk to those people who make these kind of motions, tell them you're getting kind of tired of it, because we are. So please, you know, think about it. I mean, you guys are coming to us with applications, but. More and more, they're taking the power away from us to do what we need to do in our community. So please, let them know that it's time for them to stay in Sacramento.
Thank you. Okay. Which, which um, which of the many um uh? Movements did you make?
Uh, motion to approve the um, the use permit application, which is.
Can I interrupt for a second? The initial study motion needs to be firstly.
Yeah, ISM and D.
So if we can have the original motion withdrawn and then we can have a new motion for the ISM and D.
Yeah, okay, let's, let's withdraw the original motion. Create a new motion for the approval of the initial study with conditions.
And and Bob? Your second, Bob seconds that one, too. Can we have a real call on that?
Sure, Chair Dawson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Silva.
Hi.
That motion carries with a vote of five.
And for the. For the second one, what do we got?
Is the second one adopting a mitigated net?
That's what we just did.
All right, so the second motion is. Planning Commission adopts a resolution to approve use permit application UP twenty three zero one oh seven. Architectural review permit application ARP twenty three.
That's yet another one.
No, you could, all these are on the same resolution.
Okay.
Uh, and. Tree removal permit ART twenty three zero one zero six.
And does that include the?
And.
The extra tree, the, the, the tree.
And relocation of outdoor storage of U-Haul rental vehicles and the removal of eight palm trees and five red flowering gum trees. With four special conditions of approval.
Okay, I'll second that if that's a motion.
It was.
That all the cleanup for the first one was made.
Yes, yes. Uh, can we have a real call on that, please?
Chair Dawson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Silva.
Hi.
Okay, do we have another one in there?
We already.
No guts?
No, we did that.
I think we're finished. At least with that. Um, we have a. Let's see, an informational report.
Yep.
Congratulations, by the way.
Yes, way to go.
A great use of the uh total use of the lot in the facility, yeah.
A great use of something between the freeway and Del Monte.
Really? Where were we? We were, we were going to have a, 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 a comment from.
Yeah, I can, depending on, before we move to that, just a reminder to those in the chambers and watching at home. These uh decisions of the planning commission are appealable to the city council within ten days. Um, but yes, just for a quick planning update. Uh, as noted in the uh staff report, there was an extension to the temporary. Uh, suspension of the Mills Act uh program to further evaluate the fiscal impact of the program. That uh extension was for ten months and fifteen days. Um, and then just wanted to note that uh our uh regularly scheduled uh December twenty sixth. Planning Commission meeting will be canceled uh due to city offices being closed and I assume.
And all, yeah.
The commission would not want to attend. Uh, and as of today, we do not have any tentative items scheduled for the January ninth PC meeting, but we will uh. Keep you all um up to date on that if that changes. That's all.
You're already, already planning it to January?
We are.
Oh, boy. Um, I guess, I guess I can, I can have a discussion with, with Kim about the uh, about the Mills Act. So I don't have to have it in open session.
Um, if you have a specific question, I can fill that question.
Um, I'll share it with Kim.
That works.
Okay, nothing mas?
I've got one. Um, I'll be out of town on the ninth, just so you know.
Okay, thank you.
And um. In the last um update, the city put out the. November update, it had a great review of um sidewalk repair, at least it discussed the general. Um, issues associated with how to know there's something pending because of the paint. But I think there should be a follow up on that that describes who's responsible and how, because it measure, it mentioned measure S. But in some cases, um, the city requires the resident to do the repair. Right, and so maybe a abbreviated discussion that could um make that clearer to the public. Um, on how, um, who's responsible and under what conditions? And I think the, the monthly or the, the Monterey update that comes out would be excellent um.
The focus.
Then you for um having that discussed.
Sure, I'll pass that comment along to our uh public works department.
Okay, no more comments?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, y'all.